Let's call to order the May 1st, 2018 Regular Meeting of the Chino Valley Planning and Zoning Commission. Commissioner Bacon, will you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a roll call, please.
Commissioner Armstrong?
Here.
Commissioner Welker?
Here.
Commissioner Bacon?
Here.
Commissioner McGafferty?
Here.
Commissioner Metters?
Here.
Vice Chair Paceyak?
Here.
Chair Merritt?
Here. Thank you. We'll move to item 4A, consideration of possible action to approve the April 3rd, 2018 Regular Meeting minutes of the Chino Valley Planning and Zoning Commission. Has everybody had a chance to review those things? Anybody have any questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman, I have one comment. It said on page four, commissioners had concerns regarding the following. If my memory serves me correct, I did have some land use compatibility issues. And I just want to state that for the record.
In which item?
That was under number eight.
Okay, do you have a bullet point we can go off of?
Discussion items. The last one, just before public comments. Was a bullet point.
Okay. You said it was item eight, because I have item six.
If you're looking on the old...I'm looking at the revised agenda, so I'm not sure what's said on the...let me take a look at the new one here.
Okay, it's item eight, discussion items.
I can see you're a little confused, as I am too, because it...I'm looking at the older packet.
Would that be on page seven?
I'm looking at the minutes for March 20th, so I...never mind.
Are we good?
Yeah, we're good.
All right, any other questions or discussion? I'd entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to accept the minutes as read.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Have a second? Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Motion's carried. Anybody opposed? All right, moving to item number five, staff reports. Jason?
Good evening, thank you Chair and Commissioners. Just a brief report tonight on some current events. Last week, the UDO Subcommittee met, was really our third meeting, but our second more sub-sub meeting, where we reviewed the land use definitions and tables. That's basically all of our permitted land uses in the Town of Chino Valley's UDO. So we've developed what we call a new matrix, as opposed to listing land uses separately within each zoning district. How we're going to do consolidated use tables, and then have summary of terms or a glossary of those terms, so that it's exhaustive in another portion of the code. I think the meeting went well, it's just a lot of material. We'll be meeting again in about eight weeks to start looking at prospective new zoning districts to add to the code where we find gaps in our current zoning districts. Prior to that, I think the week before, the Economic Development Subcommittee met to review the second contract amendment, or the first contract amendment for the EPS group for the Old Home Manor Industrial Park Master Plan. We all agreed that it was the right way to move, but we are going to take it forward to council next week due to the expenditure. Aside from that, we have, next week, we have a preliminary meeting for a project referred to as Nighthawk. I don't know if you may, any of you may recall it, but it's from several years ago. It's kind of coming back from a dusty shelf, I suppose. I mean, that's way up by El Rio, or Del Rio, up north in the northwest corner of town. You know where the town has a small little piece of land that juts out to the northwest? That's the project. And they're coming back to look forward to maybe doing a rezoning in another plat. So, that's it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, we'll move to item six, the public hearing portion of the meeting. Item 6A, consideration of possible action regarding a request for a zone change for approximately 5.71 acres of real property, generally located approximately 1,000 feet west of the northwest corner of West Road 1 North and North Road 1 West at 1190 West Road 1 North, from AR5 Agricultural 5-acre minimum, to SR1 Single Family Residential 1-acre minimum. Alex?
Good evening, Chair, Vice Chair, Commission. Before you have an item, an applicant, Mr. and Mrs. Harper, are requesting a zone change from the current zoning from AR5 Agricultural Residential 5-acre minimum to Single Family Residential 1-acre minimum. Property is located approximately 1,000 feet west of the northwest corner of West Road 1 North and Road, North Road 1 West, at 1190 West Road 1 North. As you can see, it's a, to the north is a vestibule-need-a subdivision, and to the west is a Mesa Use Estate subdivision, so it's in between two subdivisions. Property is approximately 5.7 acres, as it's currently in the AR5 zoning district. It has a land use designation in the general plan of medium-density residential, and currently there's a single-family residence, a guest home, workshop, and a shed on the property. Surrounding zoning on the, surrounding zonings to the subject property are to the north, Single Family Residential 1-acre minimum; to the west, Single Family Residential 1-acre minimum; to the south, Agriculture Residential 5-acre minimum, and Single Family Residential 1-acre minimum; and to the west, sorry, to the east, Commercial Light, and Single Family Residential 1-acre minimum. So as you could see, the request for the zone change, or the zoning that the applicants are requesting is supported to, by the zoning to the north, to the west, to the south, and to the east, on all sides. The purpose of the zone changes, the applicants want to go forward and split the property into three separate properties. They're currently working with CVID to abandon an easement that's currently here, running north and south. Again, here's a land survey that shows a way that the applicant, that the applicants want to split the property. This is not part of the zoning, but still, it helps visually to see how the property is going to look in the future. They want to split it into three, the middle portion of it is going to stay as 3.7 acres. The portion to the west is going to be 1 acre, and the portion to the east is going to be 1 acre. They're going to create a cross-axis easement on the north of the property, which is going to be accessed through Poco Lane. The applicant submitted notifications to property owners surrounding the property that resulted in 30 notifications. Staff received a one call from a, from a property owner that's to the north of the subject property. They were concerned of the property owners having access to Poco Lane. There is currently two power poles with electrical lines going through them. Spoke to the applicants, they are currently working with APS to resolve that issue, in order for them to have that legal access through Poco Lane. Again, that's not part of the, that's not a zoning issue, though. But they are going to be working with the APS to, and with them to resolve that issue so they can have that common access through Poco Lane. So staff recommends that the Planning and Zoning Commission forward a recommendation of approval for the zone change that the applicant is, that the applicant is requesting. Mr. and Mrs. Harper are here, if there's any questions for them, or for myself, that the commission might have.
Anybody have any questions for Alex, while he's at the microphone?
Yeah, Alex is looking at this, I understand that the easement off of Poco Lane is of no concern to us?
It's not a zoning issue. It's going to be an issue that we will work with the applicants when they submit for a lot split, and that's where...
Is that going to come back to us later for a lot?
No, it won't. That's a, that's a staff approval.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? All right, I'd like to invite Mr. Harper to, or his representative, to approach the podium if he so desires.
I don't think I have any comments.
Thank you. Open this portion of the meeting to anybody from the public that would like to speak about this item. Seeing as how we have nobody wanting to speak, we'll close that part.
If you...
Ma'am, if you'd like to, if you would like to speak, if you would like to speak, would you please step up to the podium and state your name?
Yeah, my pleasure, thank you. Good evening, everyone. My name's Marsha Moyer, and I'm a resident of Chino Valley for the last two and a half years. And viewing the schematic here, it appears that if the easement doesn't go through, isn't that going to be landlocked?
I don't see how it would be landlocked myself. Would Alex like to address that?
So, so the property is, are you talking about the middle portion?
No, the 2-1 acre plot.
So that's the way that, that applicant will create a legal access to our properties as they're creating the 50-foot easement. The UDO requires that the applicant provide a 50-foot easement. So in that case, it's not going to be landlocked.
Okay, and they will have, they have access to Poco now?
Right now, yes, they have access to both Poco Lane and to, through North Road 1 West, through the south here, through the po handle, and then through here, they have a 50-foot driveway, yeah, driveway, through Poco Lane.
Thank you.
Ma'am, did you see that on the drawing up there? Do you understand it?
Yes, I see it.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, public portion for this item is closed. Any questions from the commission on this?
I'm here.
All right, I would entertain a motion.
Commissioner, I move to recommend approval to Town Council of this request to rezone approximately 5.7 acres of real property located approximately 1,000 feet west of the northwest corner of West Road 1 North and North Road 1 West at 1190 West Road 1 North, from AR5 Agricultural Residential 5-acre minimum to SR1 Single Family Residential 1-acre minimum.
Do we have a second for the motion?
I'll second.
We have a second? One small comment, I would just like to make sure that the APS thing is totally and completely resolved before moving forward with the lot split.
Yeah, that would need to be, we're working closely with a town engineer on that.
Yep, I'm sure it'll be done, just wanted to make sure that it was out there.
Yes, sir.
Okay, any further discussion or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion is carried. All right, moving forward to item 6B, consideration of possible action regarding a request for a conditional use permit for approximately 4.55 acres of real property located approximately 1,000 feet south of the southwest corner of East Road 2 North and North Road 1 East at 784 North Road 1 East. Approval of the conditional use permit will allow the applicant to continue the operation and maintenance of a well-drilling business consistent of storage of vehicles, machinery, and supplies in the AR5's zoning district. Alex?
Chair, Vice Chair, Commissioners, before you have an application by Mr. McGee, he is applying to renew a conditional use permit that has been expired. The property is located approximately 1,000 feet south of the southwest corner of East Road 2 North and North Road 1 East at 784 North Road 1 East. To the east of the property is Colonial Villa subdivision, or what's going to be Colonial subdivision in the future, and to the west is Country West Mobile Home Park. Property is approximately 4 and 1/2 acres. It is located in the major community downtown core in the general plan. Land use designation. Currently, the property is a, is a single-family residence, and there's a 5,000-square-foot workshop, where they do a lot of the maintenance of the vehicles and of the, and of the drills for the commercial businesses that's on property, and they have three accessory structures. Just a brief history of the, of the project. In 1996, Mr. McGee, Daniel McGee, applied for a zone change for the, for the parcel. At the, at that time, it was AR zoning district, which is equivalent of the AR5 zoning district that we have now. He was requesting to rezone the property to CM1, which is equivalent to the Commercial Light zoning district that we have today. Just to skim through this, even though surrounding property owners were in favor of their request, the commission expressed reservations regarding the potential future uses of the property once the rezon was in place, meaning that the CM1 zoning might have a great impact on surrounding properties at that time, in 1996. Legal counsel requested that Mr. McGee instead apply for a conditional use permit, and the conditional use permit was granted by ordinance 297 in December of 1996. One of the stipulations of that conditional use permit, or that ordinance, was that the applicant renewed his conditional use permit within a five-year period. And that never happened. The business was transferred from father to son, and the son had no, no information regarding this. He didn't know that the conditional use permit had expired. But the business has been running there since 1996. Staff has done extensive research through the parcel file and other documents, and the property has not been in violation since 1996, as far as surrounding property owners complaining about the noise or aesthetics of the property, the way that it looks, with them storing vehicles and equipment there, there hasn't been any complaints whatsoever regarding the property. And that's why staff is recommending that the Planning and Zoning Commission forward a recommendation of approval for, to renew the conditional use permit with the same Here's a site plan that was submitted with a, with a conditional use permit. As you see here, the main buildings that are shown are is that single-family residential home that's there, and the workshop was where most of the maintenance for the equipment and the, and the, and the vehicles are done. And then see, here in the back, you have accessory structures, and this is the area where they store their equipment and their vehicles, south of the property. And there's a lot of vegetation and a lot of trees that serve as buffers for blocking the storage from the public streets. Again, staff recommends that the Planning and Zoning Commission forward to Town Council a recommendation of the conditional use permit to allow the continuation of operation and maintenance of the well-drilling business consisting of storage of vehicles, machinery, and supplies in the Agriculture Residential 5-acre minimum zoning district, with no time period associated with the, with the conditional use permit.
I have a question. Just, I'm going to clarify that last part, so it would be an indeterminate approval for the CUP?
Right, staff is in, because the business has been running for about 22 years, and there's...
I understand that, no, I'm just, I'm trying to look for consistency, so what I'm asking is, so on these CUPs, we're kind of looking at an endless timeframe unless there's some infraction that would require revocation at a later day?
Correct. Usually with conditional use permits, depending on the type of, the use of it, it might be time stipulated with it, five years, 10 years, 15 years. In this case, we're not putting a timestamp on it.
Anybody else have any concerns or questions? Okay, would, so Alex, I guess we're good with that. I'd like to have Mr. McGee come up and speak if he would like.
Mrs. Mayday is the applicant, or the representative of the, of the property owner.
Okay, that would be great.
Sorry to disappoint, I'm not Mitch. Good evening, Chairman Merritt and Commissioners, before you, you have the extension of the conditional use permit for Mr. McGee's well-drilling business. As Alex stated, we have the, this is, the original conditional use permit was approved in 1996 with ordinance number 297. As he said, it's expired in 2001, nobody really noticed, and so when Mitch came in to apply to do some other work on the property, it came to everyone's attention that this conditional use permit had lapsed. As Alex stated, his business has been running since 96 without complaint. Mitch recently inherited the property from his father, when, like I said, when he went in to pull some permits to do some other work, discovered that the conditional use permit had lapsed, and immediately took action to rectify the situation. I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
Anybody have any questions for Ruth? All right, thank you, Ruth.
Thank you.
Open up the public portion of the meeting for this item. Does anybody have anything they'd like to state or say? We'll close the public portion of the meeting. So I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move to recommend approval to the Town Council of this request for a conditional use permit for approximately 4.55 acres of real property located approximately 1,000 feet south of the southwest corner of East Road 2 North and North Road 1 East at 784 North Road 1 East, to allow the continuation of the operation and maintenance of a well-drilling business consisting of storage of vehicles, machinery, and supplies in the AR5 Agricultural Residential 5-acre minimum zoning district.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second? Any discussion, questions? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion's carried. Okay, moving on to item 6C, consideration of possible action regarding a request for a minor general plan amendment to change the land use designation for approximately 9.49 of 15.9 acres of real property generally located at 1460 West Road 4 North, from a medium-density residential land use designation to a commercial multifamily residential land use designation. Also, consideration of possible action regarding a request to rezone approximately 75 acres of real property generally located at .25 miles west of the northwest corner of West Road 4 North and North Road 1 West. The applicant has requested to rezone 15.9 acres from a CLMRPAD, Commercial Light Multifamily Residential with a planned area development overlay, to 6.4 acres of SR1 and 9.49 acres of CL, Single Family Residential 1-acre minimum, and Commercial Light, respectively. The remaining 59 acres are requested to be rezoned from AR5 to SR1. Jason?
Thank you, Chair and Commissioners. I know that was a bit of a mouthful. Wanted to kind of stop for a moment to talk about the general plan amendment request that's associated with the project. You know, the facility developed several years ago, I think in the mid-2000s, mid-to-late 2000s, 2006, '05. I mean, at that time, it was, I believe, operating under its original AR5 zoning, and then in, more recently, it was rezoned to Commercial, which is the more appropriate district for it, with a split, you know, request for multifamily residential, and then a planned area development overlay with some use restrictions. For, not certain of the, the history result with that, but it wasn't actually in conformance, that rezoning case at the time with the general plan, however, it was rezoned lawfully. So the case of the general plan amendment tonight is really just a map cleanup effort. The property's already entitled to commercial land uses, so you don't need to really worry too much about it. It's really just a formality to get the maps in sync with one another. So really, tonight, we're focused more on the zone change. I just wanted you to know why, why that's listed up there. And as we discussed at the study session, we said that we would initiate that case, so we did so. The property's highlighted here in the green with the kind of reddish boundaries, so it's kind of includes the actual Windmill House facility and Event Center now, and is, as I said, you can see, in addition to that property, it includes a large square, a rectangular property to the north that extends all the way to 4 and 1/2 North. You can see it more, kind of more clearly here, this kind of spun aerial. You can see, you know, where the Windmill House takes access off of 4 North. It extends, they have property with frontage along 4 North that extends to the east. There's an existing residence on the one property there, and then up north, of course, the property's more or less vacant. All in all, it's 75 acres, and the three parcels with the associated acreage information are listed there as well for reference. The entire property is designated medium-density residential. So the project history, on December 8th, 2015, this is when the property, when the Windmill House and some nearby property around it was zoned with what we call kind of a blended zoning. We don't really do that anymore. It's got multifamily zoning and commercial zoning with a planned area development overlay on it now, that's when it was adopted. Through that case, I think, you know, as they rezoned to Commercial, they did the planned area development overlay to throw in some use restrictions. You know, you might ask, why don't we still have a planned area development overlay in the proposal now? I've reviewed the uses in the district, there's nothing very noxious in there that needs to be worried about, or would be likely feasible in this location. Subsequently, with the rezoning of the property completely surrounding the Windmill House, they're self-insulating, if you will, for many potential negative impacts. We're not really concerned about it. So I'd rather just keep it as clean as possible. We don't need unnecessary planned area development overlay laying around out there. So straight zoning, take the multifamily off, they don't want to do the condos anymore, just keep the commercial zoning on the Windmill House for its, you know, current operations, and then everything around it's proposed to go to one lot, you know, 1-acre lot residential. We've got the project description in here, I won't reread the minor general plan info, but since they're no longer intending to do any condos or apartments, I'm not sure how they framed that argument back in the day, they don't really have an interest in multifamily, their interest really is just to build out the rest of their property with 1-acre lots. So I'll show you the site plan here in just a moment. This is the existing zoning map. Again, if this project were to be successful through Town Council, everything that CLMRPAD would just be reduced to CL, and a portion of it would be taken to SR1. This is the development plan, due to the orientation of the property, sorry to keep flipping orientations on you, you know, to the left is actually south. You can see, this is their site plan, development plan, if you will, that shows the 1-acre lot. So you'll have the existing residents and other acre lots fronting on, on 4 North, and then you'll have a small little cul-de-sac punch-in with a few lots there, that's where you see, as you get to the south of the Windmill House. Then we'll have an entry drive that actually connects 4 North to 4 and 1/2 North through the project, so it'll extend up to the west side of the Windmill House, going forward, and to the extent that the property gets deep enough to support a lot dimension for a 1-acre lot, they'll start plating the lots there. And then they have just a very simple, straightforward subdivision plat to the north with some retention basins along 4 and 1/2 North in each corner. So it's, no, nothing out of the ordinary. We did have some questions on whether or not the place needs to provide a park, or a tot lot, or things like that, but generally, in my review of most of the 1-acre or larger lot projects, the lots are so large already that they in and of themselves provide natural open space to the community, because it's not very dense. So we just needed to have enough open space to provide retention, and then other than that, we didn't seek too much else in terms of park space, like we saw last week, or last time with, like, the Perkinsville project, where you have small lots. So you need park spaces for people to take their dogs and, and for their children to Site infrastructure... Site infrastructure will include provision of water services through Apalusa Water Company, which may need some improvements to the company itself. This is for informational purposes only. Utility provisions to the project will be settled through the plat process. This is just so you know where they're getting their water. They'll also be providing, it's proposed at this time to do fifty-two septic tanks, essentially individual septic tanks on the lots because there's not any sewer lines that are within a couple of miles, actually. We are recommending, based on staff's review, P and Z study session last month, and generally, you know, it's conformance with the general plan subsequent to processing of the minor general payment. We are recommending approval. You know, it's, it actually, you know, taking the multifamily off in this location, we think makes sense. It could have worked if it was the right type of project, but really, one acre lots is pretty consistent with development in the area. And it's a low-density project, probably going to have some custom homes on it. We think it'll be a good fit for the Windmill House. We did have some concerns from the neighbors that arose. Not so much, there were concerns that the one acre lots were a problem. Nor did they have any real concerns about the actual operations of the Windmill House. It's a beautiful facility, if you've ever been there. I think they were just concerned that there is going to be somewhat of an uptick in traffic compared to what AR Five would normally support. So with the rezoning case, they were hoping to get maybe a wall, a six-foot block wall at the portion of the entry drive that extends along the west side of the Windmill House. If you look at the north portion of the project, there are two large lot residences that back to what that entry drive will be, the new road. And they were hoping that through, they could get a wall there. I guess they have some animals or that they would like protect it from the traffic, the lights, the commotion. And then, you know, with people perhaps at the Windmill House for events coming over, just keeping the separation of land uses. It is within the purview of the P and Z, of P and Z to recommend a wall to be placed in that location. Staff didn't recommend it. It's not technically required in the code, but if there's an effort of good faith or goodwill between the neighbors and the Cortavanas, that's, you know, they could certainly settle that. We haven't, you know, not all developments require walls. Molly Ray's not walled. And then this whole project's not being proposed to be walled that I'm aware of at this time. But, you know, it could be a discussion point with the owners. And of course, they're here tonight. You see them here in the front row. So that said, we are recommending approval on both proposals, and I'd be happy to answer questions.
Have we got any questions for Jason? I'd like to clarify the wall set up a little bit, please.
Sure. I can use my mouse, if you don't mind. The mouse would be right here. I mean, the, where my mouse is, is this is where they proposed. This is kind of vacant or fallow property. That owner has not participated. I don't know in the public process that I'm aware of. I've spoken with the neighbors on these two lots, and I believe, we have, I mean, clearly there's people in the audience that are, may wish to speak. They can identify where they live in proximity of the project. But this is the request that I had received right here.
For the drainage area, where the lots go to one acre, the wall would stop at that point?
Well, right now, the request is just to maybe take the wall to there. I don't know about here. But you see, this is the back of somebody's lot. So I'm not certain if the developer ultimately really wants to do block walls, like Apalusa's walled in, but Molly Ray's not. Sometimes it's just a lot of wall. And people just put split rail or no fence up at all. They just, properties extended to one another at that size.
Okay, so just to clarify, because I'm being a little thick-headed here, sorry.
No, no, it's okay.
The first two properties off of Road Four North, where we have the drainage swale area, that is the area where they were speaking about a fence.
That's correct.
And then the start of the one acre properties, the fence would not be necessary because basically it's the same sort of a setup as what's around it.
Right, and there hasn't been, you know, there hasn't been a request to extend it beyond that point, really. It could go past that, but you know, walls are at an expense, you know, they are, I mean, I don't know how much it costs to build a six-foot block duly wall or whatever, builder wall, as you call it. But it's something to consider in the overall scope of the project.
Okay, well, I can see the concern for the drainage area, but after it turns into one acre lots, it's pretty much just like everybody else in the neighborhood.
Yeah, the concern is, is the road comes down and it bends. So in the evening or at night, you know, the cars will swing wide, the lights will carry across. There is some landscaping there. And ultimately, you know, it could end up just being a case of putting in denser landscaping or a combination of both. But I think it's a good discussion topic. It's really been the only real compatibility issue that I've heard come up between the requests for the zone change in adjacent properties, which are lower density.
Okay. Anybody have any more questions for Jason? Alrighty, thank you. I'd like to have the owner's representative come up and speak if he chooses.
Mr. Chair, Vice Chair, and Commissioners, thank you for the opportunity to present this project to you. Jason did an excellent job, I think, in pretty much summing up the request for the rezoning. In doing so, the one acre lots are consistent on all four sides, pretty much, of the project. This project has been before the Planning Commission and Zoning Commission many times for other uses. In doing it this time, the request is very simple, just to be consistent with the four sides. And in doing so, in creating the one acre on the west side, it's creating an excellent buffer for the Windmill House, where it's protecting that CL from all surrounding areas. So I appreciate everything and your approval. Thank you.
Anybody have any questions for the owner?
Would you be opposed to putting a wall there of the-
It would be a consideration that we would consider in developing the plat.
All right, thank you, sir.
I have, what, do you already have developers in mind and everything? Is that, or have you already got a developer in mind, or are you the developer?
Right now, we're, we were home developers in Phoenix, Arizona, for a number of years, and we might develop some of it ourselves. We haven't gone, we haven't really gone down the avenue on who's developing it yet.
Anybody else? Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Okay, I would like to open the public portion of the meeting for this item. If you come up to the podium and choose to speak, you'll be given three minutes to state your case or your opinion. Please be concise and polite. You, sir. Step up to the podium and state your name, please.
Hello, my name is Robert Schoon, and I live at fourteen ninety-eight West Road Four North, which I would be the first property coming into the driveway into the new proposed project. I'm the one, or one of the ones that's requesting the wall.
Jason's gonna help us out right there.
Do you use the mouse to identify your property?
Oh, okay.
Because it shows up online.
Right there.
Yep.
Thank you.
So that's my house. So my concern with the project, I've, I've worked as a superintendent for developers for years. And with this road coming in, they're basically creating a road along, parallel to my house. It's no longer just another one acre parcel being built next to my house. So that's where my concern is for a wall. Right now, there is some landscaping that's there. It's not very solid, doesn't really create a sound buffer or a light buffer. And also, the maintenance of it, portions of the trees are growing into my property approximately three to four feet. So then it becomes a maintenance issue for me, where I would like to see a wall which is solid. There's no maintenance, there's nobody having to come over on my side of the property to maintain it. So that's, that's my concern for that. And then I also consider, you know, the Windmill House is a commercial property. And even though that little sliver is considered part of the residential, to me, it still is part of a commercial property, which, again, I think initially, when the Windmill House was built, there probably should have been some separation of the commercial and the residential properties there. Another consideration, too, is since they do not have a developer on this, when that project gets started, if it's individual lots that are going to be built over a long period of time, I'm anticipating probably a lot of construction vehicles up and down that road, which, again, a sound buffer would be liked, basically. So those are my considerations. If you have any questions for me? At all, or?
I think you've expressed your concern about the sound very well.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else like to speak? Please step up to the podium and state your name.
Good evening, I'm Wayne Moore. I live right at the end of Bumblebee. My property adjoins the Windmill property. And first of all, I want to say I do appreciate the proposed plan for one acre lots. And also, the fact that Bumblebee won't be continued into, to the Windmill property. And however, I am concerned about the headlights and noise. And I agree with what Rob just said about, a fence wouldn't do it because the way that road bends, whether they're coming in or out, the headlights are going to swing right across those two properties. And the same with the noise, I think it should have more landscaping, too. So between the wall and the landscaping, I, I think that would pretty much do it, as far as I'm concerned. And again, I do appreciate the one acre lots, that's a good idea. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else like to speak? Step up to the podium and state your name.
My name is Ronald Mainz, and I'm a resident of Chino Valley. I've been for nineteen years. Before I get to my questions, I'd like to start out making an observation about where the project plan is at this point. It's my impression that most folks are generally in favor of the plan, and I put myself in that camp as well. But all of us have questions as a result of the neighborhood meeting, and to me, to make a lot of sense. For my part, are a couple of issues that I'd like to address, namely, infrastructure and water. During the presentation, we were assured that infrastructure would be in place first. Streets, walks, et cetera, association, associated with the subdivision would be done before any houses are built. I think that needs to be emphasized as a prior, priority. The only mention of infrastructure was water from the Apalusa Water Company. I'll address that now. During the presentation, Tony Cortavano stated that they have an approval from ADWR and ADWQ for the project water plan. So the first action, first action I took was to file a request for public records in support of the claim. And Development Services responded by saying that it wasn't required for the rezon. I guess that could be technically true, but nonetheless, there must be documents to support Cortavano's claim, if it is true. To that end, I contacted ADWR and learned a few things and was confused by a couple. When I asked about Apalusa Water, I was told their area is Apalusa One and Apalusa Two, period. And it does not cross Road Four North. What confused me was being told that in any event, the project needs to have a certificate of assured water supply. I'd never heard of that. And on that point, it was stated that it takes six months to a year to go through that process. Rather daunting. Then I looked at ADEQ, which it turns out has a data search engine that uses names, addresses, parcels, and et cetera to locate information. And it turned up nothing. Then I turned the Arizona Corporation Commission to see if they had any information on the project. There was none, only annual reports and general information. So I went back to the contact at ADWR and asked if there is anything in the record that indicates approval of Cortavano's water plan. The answer was no, none. So at this point, I'd say that Cortavanos need to clarify what they mean when they say they have approval, when all of the evidence suggests that there is none. The contact person at ADWR is Mr. Rick Obenshan. And his phone number is six oh two seven seven one eight six two two, which rings right at his desk. It'll be easy to contact him for information, confirmation of what I've said. And I, I'll give this as a, to go along. That has the number and all that stuff, if you want to try contact. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else like to speak? Please step up to the podium and state your name.
I'm trying to. It was nicer when the map was up there showing the Windmill House. Commissioner-
One second, it'll help you out.
Chairman, Commissioner? Here we go. Okay, back up above where the Windmill House, the Commercial Light area, that black line going across there goes through a driveway. That driveway was part of the residential-
Excuse me.
I, can you, someone can point, because I'm not sure where you're talking. And I want to make sure I'm following you. Right there.
I can show you. You can use the mouse.
There we go.
And the mouse will show them on the screen. There you go.
Right there.
Thank you, sir.
See, right above there, there's a driveway. When Joe removed this section here from the property that was rezoned last time, so that the people that lived in these houses here wouldn't have the right to ask for a supermajority-
Can you speak into the mic? Thank you.
Supermajority at council meeting, this road here was part of the residential, okay? Also, Joe was supposed to dedicate an easement across the front here. I have not found in the minutes where it was accepted by the council that dedication. If that dedication wasn't done, then this is illegal. It should never have opened. This was supposed to, and Ruth Mayday, who's still here, because I asked her very distinctly the night of the rezoning, is that going to be used for the access to the Windmill House? And she said, no. And next day, it was being used, and still, to this day, is being used. The problem I have with this whole thing is, the mouse up there, all along here, over the last few years, Joe has cleaned out all the rubble, concrete, and everything he's had around there, and has buried it across the front there. You can still see some of it sticking out of the earth. If you try to build houses out there, somebody's going to have to, the developer, will probably have to remove it. And I think it was buried illegally, as far as Town UDO goes, codes. You know, my problem with Joe is, number one, all he wants is commercial light. The rest of that stuff will probably never happen unless it's required before the rezoning's complete. He has to put everything into place, because the Windmill House originally was built as part of a development like that. But he built the Windmill House first and then never built the rest of it. The Windmill House got him his commercial light with a planned area development. But now, he's getting rid of that because he hasn't done anything with it. And it goes on and on and on. In other words, I don't trust him a bit. Thank you, gentlemen. You have a good evening.
I have a question. Robert McCauley. I have a question for the speaker.
Would you like to answer a question?
Sure, Chuck. You referring to, he hasn't kept his word regarding, and that's what I don't understand, is that the Windmill House is there, and any dedication of road, additional easement along Road Four North, which is what I recall as well, would take place at the time that the, any tract is proposed there, any parceling of the property?
Okay, for him, for the council to approve his rezon, to what he's got there now. It was stipulated in the rezon that he had to make a dedication of the easement. That had been one of the major drawbacks on him getting his CUPs, Commercial Light, or anything else he wanted in there, was the dedication of that easement. And if that easement was dedicated to the state, the county, the federal government, or somebody else like that, it's not legal because it has to go to the Town Council and be accepted, correct?
We're not going to be able to answer that question?
I understand that.
I just want a clarification, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions?
I think we're good for now. Thank you.
Okay, take care.
Anybody else, before we make a reply, is anybody else would like to speak? Okay, thank you. Jason, I think there's a couple of things we could get addressed here.
Thank you, Chair, Commissioners. In regards to the dedication, there, I believe there was language in regards to roadway dedication, but that's usually taken at the time of development, when there's a development immediately adjacent to the roadway. If it laid fallow or undeveloped for years, there's probably no mechanism or nexus really for us to take it. In the case of this property now, we would take the dedication at the time of final plat. At that point, you know, the new property line locations would be assured. So there wouldn't be any way for this project to proceed without dedicating the property because we would get the, right away at the time of the final plat. And in regards to the other questions, too, we had speakers talk about utilities and water. I do appreciate certainly the speaker's comments about water provision, but that really will occur at the plating stage. The rezoning case is not really the place for the water conversation, and furthermore, it's regulated by ADWR and not by the town. Unless we had town water out front, which we don't, it would be with ADWR. And what we would require is a certificate of assured water supply, CAWS, as it's abbreviated, prior to any recordation of the final plat. We wouldn't let it proceed with subdividing property if we didn't know that they had the water. They would only get water service if their water company and their infrastructure could support it. In my understanding, there may need to be some adjustments to the current infrastructure- In my understanding, there may need to be some adjustments to the current infrastructure to provide the water. But again, they're not going to get, they're not going to get homes built without a provision of water. So we have a mechanism in place for that as well. Streets, the streets, dry utilities, and water will all need to be in place before we issue the first housing permit on any one of those lots. So all the grading will have to be in place. Off-site improvements would be at the discretion of the town engineer in terms of improvements to Four and F North or Four North associated with the project. I'm not sure how the phasing will look for that, but we'll dig into that when we get to the plat. And as a reminder, the plat will come back in front of you. So you will see this project again before anything gets built.
This is just addressing what the land use is for now.
Right, really the question is, is it an appropriate land use to, you know, almost downzone the Windmill House to just CL without the multifamily entitlement and rezon to one acre lots for the rest of it? That's really the question.
Okay, so if I remember correctly, because I was involved in some of this, I believe that the wordage for that right of way was included in the zoning change.
That's correct. Typically, dedication language is included in the zoning change. And I believe you're correct. But that doesn't mean the dedication occurs immediately after council action.
It's just in place so that when it does need to be there, it is there and the owners have already agreed to the dedication.
Right, no, I mean, more or less guarantees that you'll get the right of way when you want it.
Okay.
But that's after, that's during the lot split process.
That's during the plating process, yes. That's correct.
Okay, and just to reiterate, the water situation, which is extremely critical in Arizona, is not regulated by the town. And also, they can't move forward with their subdivision without assured water supply, am I correct?
That's correct, Chair. And I would caution that a decision on land use related to the provision of water shouldn't be mixed. It should be based on land use.
Correct, okay. All right, thank you. Anybody else out in the public would like to speak, please? Then I'm going to close this portion of the meeting for the public part. Anybody have any questions, any concerns?
I have a question.
Okay, Mr. Passiak?
Looking at the conceptual site plan, it shows a tract, looks like a tract A, which is the access for the fifty-two lots. Where is the access for the Windmill House? Or is it going to be a shared access?
Jason, if you could handle that?
Certainly, Chair and Commissioner Passiak. If you look here, the drive comes in right here on the street. I think they branch off. I'm not sure how they're going to handle it during construction, but it's going to be right here where it's currently at. And then that road will bend in. And then the private drive into the Windmill House will be separate. But it's occurring, both of them are occurring right there. I don't know if you've ever pulled in there, but it kind of feels like you pull in, like it tees off or something. But it doesn't tee to anywhere yet.
So there'll be an access for the residential part of the development and for the Windmill House itself?
Right, I think you're right. Once you pull in, you'll branch for one or left to the other.
Okay, and those, those right of ways have been, the owners agreed to the right of ways? They're not, maybe not dedicated yet because we haven't used them, but he's agreed to do that?
Chair, they'll need to meet our rural local street standard. It'll be a fifty-foot right of way that'll come in. We wouldn't want them separated by twenty feet because you'd have two driveway access points on a major street that are too close. They'll probably just be, a local street comes in and then the Event Center Drive will tee off of it.
And that fits in with the road criteria for the town?
That is correct. Frank, of course, is here, but I can address that. It'll need to meet our local street section for one acre lots.
Okay. Okay, just to recap a bit on the right of ways to make sure that I got this straight. The right of ways have been agreed to, they maybe have not been taken because the subdivision hasn't been platted out. But the owner has agreed to the required right of ways because I do remember that being in the language when it was before the commission, the time I was here, before being commissioned as a Chair. So that stuff is there, it's in place. And as soon as there is some development with the land or the plotting process, plating process, that's when these right of ways will be signed over, dedicated, and shown in their proper locations.
That is correct, Chair. For the ordinance that will go to council, it may include the same carryover language regarding the right of way. But they've already agreed to dedicate. It's required, we can, we can take the right of way in association with the project rezon.
Okay. Anybody else?
With the, this being zoning matter only, or we, should we be discussing landscaping and walls at this point? Or should that come later?
Chair and Commissioner, that will actually occur during the preliminary plat phase. We'll get a preliminary plat and a required landscape plan at that time.
Thank you.
And then we'll look at the plant material there.
But we can state a concern about the walls?
Well, you can actually, ordinance, through ordinance, I mean, it's a, anything too complicated, I would hesitate because it's straight zoning. But something as simple as a wall, you could ask to have that included in, as a condition in the zoning case.
I think the wall we got in mine is pretty straightforward.
Yeah, it's, it's nothing overly complex. I believe you could probably stipulate a wall even though it's straight zoning. You can't get too far off course. Or if you would like, just the concern, put in the minutes, we could address it at the pre-plat. But the teeth of the requirement would be in the ordinance associated with this case.
Okay, well, I can tell you from my own perspective that we can address it now or later, but that thing's not going anywhere without that wall being in place. So depending on how you want to go about that.
I would suggest, I'll talk it over with legal counsel. If it's the will of the commission to ask for a wall adjacent to those two lots, I would suggest recommending, if you want to forward a recommendation of approval, add a condition, add condition one, or whichever number it ends up being, that a six-foot block wall shall be placed in the southeast, excuse me, the southeast corner of the project from Four North extending, you know, across the back of the two lots.
Will you state the two parcel numbers?
Um, oh gosh, I can zoom in, just give me a second.
Well, I got my glasses on.
I have it now. So a block wall would be placed adjacent to parcels with APN number three zero six dash two oh five dash zero two three. And then, oh, they appear to almost have the same parcel number.
Yep.
That's strange.
It actually has the same parcel number.
Oh, right, it would be right here, it's these two.
Maybe it's oh six there.
It looks like the same, it looks like the same parcel.
It's oh five and oh six, I think.
Mr. Chairman, we could just say along the west side of tract E there.
Of the drainage area?
Yes.
Okay. I don't want to get too carried away here. I want to locate it as precise as we can without turning it into a survey project.
And since we're not drafting the actual ordinance right now, I understand the intent of the commission. We've demonstrated it on the plan as well as tried to describe it. I can, I can formalize that condition.
How about if we just express a strong concern or desire that we would like to have a wall on those two first parcels on the west side of the property line entering off of Road Four North?
You can do that too. I can express your concern to council if you don't want to draft a recommendation stipulation or condition. We can create a condition that is very specific, saying we're recommending, but with this added condition. Or if you'd like, I can just say the recommended approval and they have a concern. I could do it either way. I would suggest, if you really want the wall, I would recommend it with the condition. And if council doesn't like it, they can strike it.
Okay, so I think that's what we should do, is do it with a condition that the wall is on those two parcels.
Okay.
Any other discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to talk about the walls just a little bit. I would be in favor of the wall because that, those two lots are actually, with all the traffic being there, I don't think landscaping is efficient. They're correcting their concerns for sound. And you're going to have traffic there, and I think it's a good idea.
Well, I think we can make that part of the condition of the motion to move forward if that's what we choose to do. All right, so any other questions or discussion?
If I may, I do have a question.
Please step up to the podium.
Frank Marbury, I'm the town engineer. And I have one question, maybe, and I apologize for not being too familiar with this yet. I typically don't get too involved in just the zoning. It's after the zoning comes in that I start putting all the engineering magic. Jason, right here, is this SR one? Is that what I'm seeing? I couldn't see from the back.
That is the proposed, that's part of the proposed rezoning case and it's requested for SR one.
And is there any part of the development that's the commercial?
It's a commercial. So it's kind of a strange development plan, but it's just kind of mirroring the existing development lines. This is actually going to be retained as commercial.
Okay.
And then that is all commercial.
If you go back a slide, you'll see it better.
My, my, my point is, I guess, that I was saying is, the, I heard stipulations about the dedication of roadway easements. I like to say dedication of right of way. To me, easements and right of way are different. But also stipulations, I'm wondering, is there any stipulation to actual roadway improvements along Four North for the, for the old zoning?
That's really a housekeeping item and I can clarify for the commission. The, through part of the rezoning case, by common practice, we are able to add language requiring dedication and/or improvements to specific adopted town standards for adjacent and interior rights of way. So we can include that in the ordinance. It's not necessarily a condition of approval in your staff report, but it would be, it could be included as common language in the ordinance that goes to council. And Frank and I can work out the exact details of that language when we get.
Well, that's sort of your purview anyways, to make sure that we're protected with that.
Right, and, and just in general, what I do is make sure we get the roadway improvements for frontages of subdivisions. I just wanted to make sure we weren't hamstringing ourselves with something that was already done.
I know the right of way was part of the agreement before. As far as any other details after that, that's not part of our deal.
So Jason and I, I think, I think, I feel confident, I just didn't, I wanted to ask now before it's too late.
Good thing with this project.
Thank you, council.
All right, so any other discussion or questions? Okay, I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I would move to recommend approval to town council of this request of a minor general plan amendment to change the land use classification of approximately nine point four nine acres of the fifteen point nine acres lot size for parcel three oh six dash oh five dash oh three one V and is invictor from medium density residential land use classification to commercial slash multifamily residential land use classification. I also move to recommend approval to town council of this request of the request to rezon approximately seventy-five acres of real property, APN three oh six dash oh five dash oh three O R. Three oh six dash oh five dash oh three one V is invictor. Three oh six dash O V dash oh three one T requesting to rezon fifteen point nine acres from CL slash M R dash P A D, commercial light multifamily residential with the planned area development overlay to six point four acres of SR dash one and nine point four nine acres of CL, single family residential dash one acre minimum and commercial light respectively. The remaining fifty-nine acres are requested to be rezoned from AR dash five to SR dash one with the following condition of approval. That a six-foot high block wall be constructed along the west side of tract E along that property line.
In the drainage area for two parcels?
Yes, the tract E for clarification, commercial area slash drainage.
Common area.
Common area.
Arizona. All right, we have a motion, do we have a second?
A second.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion is carried. All right, moving forward to item seven, any non-public hearing items? Item eight, any discussion items? Nope. Okay, we're going to open up for item nine, public comments. This is a portion of the meeting. Call of the public is an opportunity for the public to address the commission on any issue within the jurisdiction of the commission that is not on the agenda. Public comment is encouraged. Individuals are limited to speak for three minutes. Commission action taken as a result of public comment will be limited to directing staff to study the matter, scheduling the matter for further consideration and decision at a later date, or responding to criticism. Anybody like to step up and speak? Please step up to the podium and state your name.
Ronald Maines again. Just bring to your attention, Mr. Chairman, you just, you just read it. And it says, the three-minute rule applies only to things not on the agenda. Is that correct?
Say that again, please.
Read it again. It, it says, the three-minute restriction or rule, whatever you want to call it, only applies to not on the agenda.
This, in this area of the meeting, this is only area, this is only things, public comment, that is things that are not on the agenda of this meeting. In other words, it's giving you, the public, an opportunity to speak about other items except what was on the agenda. And you're limited to three minutes unless you feel a heartfelt desire to go longer.
No, I'm just trying to make the point that it says it's all about stuff that is not on the agenda.
Correct. That, we've had people step up and speak about all kinds of different things that were on their mind. It's an opportunity in the meeting to do that.
I'm not getting through to you.
Just to explain further. This is for part of the meeting where the public can speak about things that were not part of the meeting agenda because we can't readdress those after we move forward. Please step up and state your name.
Name's Darren Mahoney. Commissioner Bacon, one of the meetings here just a while back, you had mentioned something about your concern about people rezoning properties and no developers. You know, they get it rezoned and, you know, no developers are there and the property just sits there. Like, maybe just for me to answer, when a property is rezoned, does the value of that property go up if it's like from SR five to SR one? Or is there a reason why we don't have any builders in there yet? Or is this just the beginning process of it?
We're going to ask Mr. Shanks to answer that question.
I just want to make sure I'm able to respond or if we have to wait until the next meeting for items that were not on agendas. We talked about speculative rezoning, and I don't want to loosely talk about the case that was just heard tonight because it's out of turn. But there is no prohibition on someone rezoning their property for future development, whether they're a developer or not. It's, we, certainly, we can consider it, but it really shouldn't drive the land use. We should decide whether or not what's proposed in front of us makes sense from a land use perspective. But I understand the concern, why people ask about it. It happens all the time, it happens across the country and around the world.
This is just the first step in a long process.
That's correct.
Yeah, and it was, it was kind of like when, you know, he had mentioned, I'm just kind of curious, has anything bloomed out of that? Is it, or is it just because the item on the list is kind of that too? Just, there's other properties around to get rezoned, and then you get the plans with the walls and the trees, but nothing's set in stone yet. And I know you had brought up a concern about it. I'm just curious, has it gone any farther than that? Or about having no builders when they come here with all the plots and stuff?
If I remember correctly, my comment was geared that if we should see a, a number of future rezonings occur in the future without any development, then there should be a concern. But I don't see that right now.
Okay, that's fine, that's all.
Anybody else like to speak? Okay, we're going to close the public comments part of the meeting and move to item ten, motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn.
Have a motion, do we have a second?
I will second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you, folks, for coming.